Well, the call is meeting in order, please rise for pledge to the flag. Our pledge to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the annual meeting for Casco Township. It's held once a year and all the residents, unfortunately, we only have three. Besides the folks up here, everyone is equal in this meeting.
We're so well-planned as residents.
Yes.
The top of the agenda kind of outlines it. The only thing you can vote on is if there was a salary resolution previously adopted by the board. That's the only thing you can vote on. Other than that, all your input, hopefully you have some, is advisory only. So I'll run the meeting, but I'm equal to everyone else. I have no control other than somebody's got to do it. We've pledged to the flag. The next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone, that includes the audience, have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
Who made the decision to approve?
I'll support.
Moved and approved and supported to approve the agenda. Any discussion from anyone? We'll call for a vote, but we'll raise your hands because we're used to doing that at any meeting. So raise your hand if you're in support of approving the agenda.
Where we hit that nice and double-dip little girl dude.
Motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the March 3rd, 2013 annual meeting. That's page two on that little packet.
March 5th.
I guess I put my glasses on.
March 5th, yeah, this is wrong, it's March 5th.
No, you're correct. Top of the page says March the 5th. You guys need a minute to look at it out there or not?
Dan moved.
Oh, he moved.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2013. You guys want to look at it a minute before we vote? Because you didn't have it until tonight. I guess not. All those in favor, please raise their hand. Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda, item number one, elected officials salaries. We have two elected officials that are requesting a pay raise. The first one on the list is Mrs. Allgren, the clerk, who is asking for a 3% increase from $27,176 dollars a year to $27,991.28 dollars a year. They have, Mrs. Allgren has not had a raise since 2008 anyway. And she does a good job. She comes to work every day, which is a lot of clerks do not do. Those are all good things. The downside is that currently we make about $55,000 a year less in general fund revenue than we did in 2008. And that's primarily because of loss of people from the last census. And interest income, we made $24,000 in interest income back in 2008. Now we make $788. And property values have actually gone down a little bit since 2008, so we get a little less property tax. Be that as it may, we try to be, we're trying to be very conservative with the budget, trying to save every nickel for future events. We're in good shape, but if we get to a point where the road millage no longer exists, we're going to be in dire straits. So, that being said, we need a motion. Someone wants to make a motion.
So moved to approve Resolution 2014-2, clerk salary from $2,776 to $27,991.28.
I'll support the motion.
Okay, moved and supported. Is there any discussion from anyone? Pretty quiet out there. Are we going to have a roll call vote on that?
No.
No, it's in the me, can't roll call. Here's the same story, raise your right paw. Eight in favor, all those against, all those abstaining?
Me.
One abstained.
One abstained.
So how many?
Eight, zero, and one abstaining.
One abstained. Do we identify the person who abstained or just one abstained?
No, it's just a random, because most years, there's always a couple of people that don't vote. And we never identify them.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is Resolution 2014.
We remember.
We remember. Oh, three. This is an exact similar request as the last one, only it's for our treasurer, Mrs. Stone.
So moved.
I'll support that.
You don't even let me.
Well, we know what's going on.
Feel free.
Okay, well, moved and supported.
Joe, you support it.
Okay. Mrs. Stone has been the treasurer for a long time. She does an excellent job. She comes to work every day. She's very conscientious. Again, it's about a 3% raise, and she hasn't had a raise since at least 2008. So all the other circumstances are the same. And anybody else have anything to say on the matter? There are nothing to call for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed, abstaining?
Eight, zero, one.
Eight, zero, one.
I have a question or comment?
Well, hang on, we didn't get to number two yet.
Do you have a comment on?
On this?
On our.
I asked if there was any discussion.
Well, there's just a typo at the bottom of the page here.
Not as a dollar, huh?
No. Yes. Thank you, Eric. Very good, thank you, Eric, we're waiting.
Oh, what's the typo, Eric?
Stephen seems to be missing Carter's name.
Oh, yep, he is. But it's already done.
That looks like my Scandinavian spelling.
Where's Danny go back?
Stephen's missing an E.
Yeah.
Mine's got an E.
Yes, sir.
Oh, my county, sorry.
I do have another question.
Is this under questions and concerns?
No, it's under, it's under your salaries here.
Okay, play.
Just, I know for the last quite a few years that the clerk and the treasurer and the supervisor have all had basically identical salaries. Is there some reason why he wasn't?
I didn't ask for it.
Okay.
That's a simple reason. I've only been in two years, and I like to be conservative. I'll let you know when I want a raise.
And I respected that, although I was a little disappointed.
I know you were disappointed.
And I've opposed these, these kinds of raises in the past, but the time comes, the time has come.
So we'll see what happens in the future.
Yeah. Very good officers.
He's a great cost.
I'm just, you know, I'm just saying that the three positions, I'm saying primary positions, not this like you guys, but, but every one of them have their headaches, is my point.
They do.
And be that it may, I was just curious.
That's okay.
We'll try to keep that up next year.
If you're happy, I'm happy. If you're not, I'm still happy. Okay, moving on, item two. Any matters of concerns or comments of residents? You got anything you want to bring up? Now's the time. Or if you want to gripe about something, I don't want to hear about the road, it's a start. But other than that, now's the time.
Where's Roger McFat?
That was my only gripe.
Well, there you go. Sorry.
My only gripe is that I am very disappointed that again this year, the road commission is not considering the completion of Meisner Road. Because as bad as all the roads get in the spring of the year, the only one that I can say is truly impassable is Meisner Road on the portion that is not paved. And it's just a shame that the very people who started the petition to get the whole project done and paved are the very same people that are sitting on the unpaved portion of that road. And I'm telling you, I came down it yesterday, you will lose an axle or a tire or whatever it is that holds cars together going more than three miles an hour, and that is just, it's terrible.
It's because county doesn't put any money in their own roads.
Well, maybe because they think they're going to finish the project, but in the meantime, those poor people are, that's, you wouldn't want to have to get out of there in a hurry. You wouldn't want to have an emergency vehicle go down that section of road, because everybody be in the cornfield somewhere.
But can you keep your paved roads paved?
I know, but we started, we went into this project with the idea that a mile or so a year was going to be paved, and in five years, it was going to be another straight shot down to county line from King Road. And you know what? I'm tired of the excuses. And that is directed toward the road commission, not anybody on this board.
But wasn't the money that paid for that came out of the general fund and not the road commission budget at the time?
Meisner Road's a county road.
It's a county road.
I know that, but it came out of the, came out of the general fund of the county.
Well, road commission budget.
Because they dedicated money to do it. But now they're paying for convention centers, so they don't have those money for the roads.
Well, now the road commission gets a budget every year, and within that budget, they have to do what they have to do. One of the board members on the road commission, I understand, is in favor of pushing ahead on Meisner Road, so we're getting close. If they, if they get some extra money from Lansing, there's hope. Probably not this year. And if the road becomes that bad, call the road commission and let them know.
Okay. They're getting that phone calls me.
It is impassable.
The frost isn't out yet, it's going to get worse before it gets better.
And other than that, I would say everything's up to date in Casco Township.
Okay, anybody else have anything? If not, we are up to adjournment.
Well, this is where we kind of miss our Roger McFat.
I guess. Not really, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support that. Moved and supported to adjourn. Everyone in favor, raise their hand, please.
Nine.
Please stand adjourned. Okay.
Yeah, it was, he added some saying there, so.
Yeah.
And who was it, what was on D?
Somebody told me.
Okay. We're ready to open the regular meeting. We're going to waive the pledge to the flag, because we just did it 10 minutes ago. And we're up to approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
I moved to approve.
I'll support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the regular minutes of the Tuesday, February 11th, 2014 board meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the financial report. I'll leave.
We began the month with $192,083.40, took in receipts of $137,393.68, and made dispersments in the amount of $19,003.23, which leaves us with an ending balance in the general fund of $310,473.85.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report submitted.
I have one question, what's, what is the rebate from Prudential?
That was entirely my doings. It was, it was part of my retirement plan, and I went to put it into a Prudential fund that I had closed. And now I, and so I had the money back from Prudential and got ahold of the financial agent to open up another set of accounts. It's just a moving word. It's check out and check would be dispersed this month.
I will, that's just fine.
Okay.
Somebody else did, but I don't know.
So we have a motion and support? We didn't vote yet, correct? Okay, any other discussion?
I have just a short item, that the tax collection for real property in, in the township is now finished. The records are up and being examined by the county. For anyone wanting to make a payment on their real taxes, please call the St. Clair County Treasurer's Office after the 20th of this month, and they should have all my figures in and processed, and they will be able to take your payments at that time. Anyone who is paying delinquent personal property taxes, my office receives those all year round, every year. And I would like to thank First State Bank and Bell River Community Credit Union for assisting in collecting the taxes or having the people being able to come to those places and pay their taxes rather than coming down the roads. They always do a great job for us, and I appreciate the effort. That's all.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item number one, correspondence, item A, Chamber of Commerce invitation, as they do every year, the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce has a breakfast up in Richmond. You all received an invitation. There's an RSVP number, it tells you the time of the thing. There's a cost of $15 a member. If you guys want to make a motion on that, you can, or maybe we'll get in for free if our insurance carrier buys a table. I do not know. He did last year.
And that's, and you got in for free then?
Well, I was the speaker last year, so I didn't have to pay anyway. But I don't think I'm speaking.
All of these people are speaking?
No, they put us at a table.
Did the?
Last year they did.
Did they choose to keep on speaker yet?
Yes.
Well, they were bannering about the governor, but I don't know if that's possible or not.
Yeah, last year was funny, I don't know, was that one guy, he was on the Richmond City Board, he goes, oh, a lot of, and then he even someone moved out there, he goes, a lot of people think we're just a bunch of farmers out here. Then Bill gets up to speak, you know, Bill Boomer, and I am a farmer. Everyone loved that, that was great.
Yeah.
So.
We would only need a motion if we were going to pay for the people, right? So we don't need one.
Yeah.
Right.
So I don't know who wants to go. I mean, Joe and I went last year.
Did you?
And.
You are going to go again?
Yep.
Maybe I'll go too.
Yeah, it's fine. We all go.
Maybe I'll drag my husband.
You're retired.
It's 7:00 in the morning.
No.
It's 7:00 in the morning.
Why don't you make a motion that we reimburse for any board member that attends that?
Huh?
Why don't you make a motion that we won't pay for any board member that attends if they turn it in?
I will make, I think I will.
I'll support.
On the promotion that any elected official that wants to go to the Chamber of Commerce, we will pay for their practice.
I support it. Yeah, if they turn it in, we'll reimburse them, or if they don't want them, then they'll turn it in.
Reimbursed? Yeah.
Yeah. It's $15. But I will say there was people at the door last year, they were trying to get money out to get in, I don't know, it was goofy. They don't, there were a lot of people there last year. Okay, moving on. Item B. Oh, that's, sorry. Okay, moved and supported, that any board member that wishes to go will be reimbursed if they so desire. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item B, metro planning workshop. They canceled it in the fall, once or twice, it's on again, it lives. March 26th, 2014. And you had that in the board packet, right, Wayne?
Yes.
Eric?
Richard May.
Huh?
Richard May.
You what?
You want to go register him?
Okay, and did you put, did you put something there about a registration date?
No, I was going to bring it up at our meeting next Tuesday night.
That's getting close.
Well.
It's on the announcement.
Their meeting is the 18th, or your meeting is the 18th.
So I'd need you to act like it's the next day.
So we'd like to go the 19th.
Can do that.
So they contact Patty by the 19th?
Yep.
If they're going.
We go.
And that goes for board members too. Let Patty know if you want her to send in your reservation, or let her know by the 19th.
She knows now.
And they have three topics. Basic training, understanding tourism, oh, they have four topics. Medical marijuana.
And a beef nap.
And the thumb loop project overview.
What's the thumb loop project?
I don't know if that's the power loop for the wind farms or what it is. I don't know. Anybody know what the thumb loop is?
I think that's what it is.
That's what I think it is. So if you want to go, there you go. Okay, moving on. Item C, road commission and a road tour in your packet. I gave you a copy of all the information that we were given at the road commission meeting. They were pretty good this year, they gave us about $10,000. We have $38,000 in matching funds and $5,000 in drainage appropriation from the road commission. So that's about $10,000 more than last year, but last year was a cut from the year before. So that's good news. And we established a time and date for the road tour, which will be April 9th at 10:00 a.m. right here. And I hope everyone can make it. Did anybody get a chance to go over this? You have any questions in regards to this? Hopefully we'll save a little money on the roads this year, because we have less gravel roads going in the north-south than we do in east-west.
Yeah, that was a good meeting up at the, the road commission, Bill Grlebo.
Did he?
That's right, my best.
You might say. That's right, my best.
And are there any more proposed or major drain projects in the work that would include the township?
Well, this drain on, from the road commission is for road ditches, it's not for county drain.
Oh, okay.
About a year ago, a year and four months to be exact, there was a board determination on a extension to the Meldrum drain. That was approved, they've been engineering it. They've come up with a plan, so I'm really working hard trying to get them to change it. But at the least, if that plan goes through, it would probably cost us, the township, about $65,000. And it could be a lot more. So I went up last week and talked to the folks up there, trying to give them a plan. I suggested a Plan B, which would be much more economical. So we'll see what happens.
The township itself, or you assess the town?
Township. They're looking at half million dollar jobs, we paid 13%.
Yeah, enough to say we'll be on the tax form.
The drain commission weren't not at the need.
No, they got a disagreement last year, and they didn't let them come this year, so.
This is the very strong commission.
It was all road commission this year.
All right.
They had a difference of opinion last year, and they wouldn't let them come.
Yeah. So you're not people, they're not serving. What's up with that? They're supposed to serve us, not drain.
Okay, so that's it. Is there any questions on the road commission information? Probably within a month or so, or two at the most, we'll be getting the prices for this year's road work, and it'll be coming to the board for approval. Okay, no old business, not a new business. Item A, it's a public hearing for the budget, for the 2000, oh, for the 2014-15 year. There was copies on the table, if everybody got one?
Seven.
So at this point in time, we're going to open the public hearing. You guys want a couple of minutes to look it over? I know it's short notice, it's not real long. It's pretty similar, there's no drastic changes from last year. Tried to keep it simple.
So the road millage, we collected $142,335 last year. And we're projecting what?
Smidgen less, because Land probably got it sold out a little bit. Not much, little bit.
Will Lansing give us increase the revenue sharing?
Well, yeah, that's included.
They're talking about it, yeah.
Yeah, their projected revenue sharing is 297 for this year, 310 for coming year.
They should.
So.
Yeah.
But don't count on it till you get it today.
Good job they did, I said, yeah, the bags of municipalities.
Right. That's 51% of the whole pot.
So they are projecting a $13,000 increase, which is pretty good.
Yeah.
Better than.
Better than the sharp stony eye.
Any questions anywhere that we can explain?
Right, same way, please.
That would be our Comcast?
Primary Comcast. The only, probably the only difference we made, we put some extra money in, because we're going to have elections this year.
Yeah.
Which we didn't have last year.
Right.
So you'll notice more money budgeted in that area, because we have, we have to hire inspectors and it costs money.
What elections are this year?
We're going to have a primary in August, and a general in November this year.
Governor.
Governor, huh?
Oh, good heavens, already?
We already had one, but that was in, the current fiscal year, not next fiscal year. Plus that one's supposed to be reimbursed by the schools.
Oh, that's right, because it's the presidential that's in '16.
Right.
Oh.
So, but we do have two elections coming up in the 14-15 fiscal year, so we tried to put money in there to cover that. Other than that, everything else is pretty much flat.
We're going to be doing some additional cemetery and maintenance, maintenance and repairs in the cemetery?
What line, tell us the page of the line.
931 is the.
No, that just pays for Quinn.
931.
That's Quinn.
Yep.
Quinn and whatever we do.
That's about what we budgeted in past years, but depending on how fast the grass grows and everything else, he's been able to stand to that amount.
Oh, okay.
I have a question on our overhead lighting. Are we charged at the regular, do they have different rates for municipality versus commercial versus residential, or?
I don't know, but we're charged at the flat rate, and it all depends on the size of the bulb you have in the fixture. Some are brighter than others. We're still working on getting our neighbors to kick in. One said they would, but we haven't seen the money, one hasn't decided, the other one said we're not good.
The ones on the.
Shared.
Okay.
Miles. What was the answer to that question?
Yeah, but they don't.
I don't know what, I don't know what commercial gets. I've got a feeling though, it's probably all about the same, they charge you about a month. It's like around $15, $16. We have roughly 45 lights, so it's coming in at, I don't know, we'd have to look on the bills, but like $700 a month.
We used to have a tax for that.
Yep, we used to have an assessment district.
But I think it was just in ADR, wasn't it?
Yep. But you guys in here benevolent, say, oh, we don't want to do that, so now we can't.
Not with, no one thought it was benevolent.
Remember, I remember down the year, they had those interesting street lamps, they're like a lover kind of, they're green and white, green and dark, I don't know, that's really kind of neat.
If they're. So then, do you need a motion?
Yes.
Yep.
I will make a motion to adopt the budget recommendations for the 2014-15 fiscal year.
I'll support it.
Moved and supported.
Okay, just, just move there.
Well, we're going to get to the discussion in a second.
Well, we had the public hearing, do we have to close the public hearing?
Well, that's right, we didn't have a motion, good point, Bill.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to?
Close the public hearing and then make a motion.
Okay, you.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
So we're just gonna completely forget this?
Okay, yep. They withdrew the motion. So we have, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I just made a motion.
Okay, hold on. Brenda's catching up.
Yeah. And I knew it because I mentioned it to Brenda, but then I forgot. My fault.
Not that I didn't, uh, get a chance to comment or anything, but you asked, you gave us time to review it and then you never go back. You asked us for anything, then you wouldn't close.
Well, I was gonna ask you again and then close it. Well, I, we'll give you one more shot.
You can do it under sedentary comments.
Okay, so it's been moved and supported.
Yeah.
To close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for vote. Are those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstaining, abstaining, the motion carries. You guys don't get to vote anymore. Your turn.
Yeah, you're done.
Okay, now we're up to approving the budget.
Okay.
And, uh, even though the other part's done, and we're gonna have to get another motion, anybody out there has any questions? You can do it now, just as easily as after we move. You got something, Eric?
No, you forgot?
No, you just didn't give him his right.
I know.
Not that he wanted you.
Well, I'm just asking.
Well, I'm just thinking up the fact that the last thing I heard you said, well, he'll give you a few minutes to look at it.
Well, that was the public hearing, but we're gonna let you add your two cents before we approve it.
Or forever hold your peace.
Well, you want, need more time?
I was just trying to digest this, but that's okay. You guys got anything?
Di- digest what? What do you need explained after?
We'll take it home. You can come to the next register.
Kinda loosey-goosey.
We're not filed by this budget.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's just an operating budget that can be altered at any regular board meeting if necessary.
Right.
So.
It's the best guess for you. Best plan to go forward.
Best guess and go from there. I'm anticipating maybe a couple of little capital projects that will require adjustments anyway, so.
With that being said, I make a motion to approve our budget.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the budget for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll roll call vote, please.
Okay, hang on. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, assessor contract. This is a yearly contract we have with our assessor. And, uh, Shelley Baumeister, who does a very good job. She's very professional, knows her business.
Yes, she does.
Uh, we're sat, well, satisfied with her work. The amount is exactly the same as last year, the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. So I strongly recommend that we approve the contract.
And a motion to approve the assessor contract is presented.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the contract for the township assessor in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. That was part of the motion, right? Or whoever made it. Brenda gets mad at me if I put stuff in that he doesn't actually say.
That's it, well.
I apologize. I should have.
No, no, it's what you say, not what he interprets what he says.
You're getting me in trouble already.
No, but.
So are we all set, Brenda?
Yep.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Moved and supported. We need a roll call vote.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No, no one's been mean to Shelley, have they? She's been saying that last since.
They know better.
Oh, no, no.
Eh, nobody was too spunky.
And she's been very firm.
Yeah. And if she, she gets stressed, she ought to file a complaint.
Oh.
She's, she's fine. She really can handle herself.
She's very calm, very keeps her, and just keeps talking.
I just don't like bullies.
Yeah, I totally get that.
No, and none of our public officials should be bullied.
Okay, now we're gonna get into some areas that may cause the budget to be adjusted earlier than planned this year. Item D is a BSNA upgrade. Do you want me to go over that or do you want to go over that with the details or do you want?
Well, all it entails is, uh, getting us, uh, into the pervasive mode, which kind of is a county mandate, which in turn was a state mandate, the county mandate, and it goes down to the municipalities. And we've had, um, almost three or four years to switch over to these systems, which a lot of the, um, bigger Marysville has and St. Clair has, and a lot of the townships have that have a little bit bigger budget than we do. But we're up against the wall now and, um, not only do we need to have, uh, our system updated so that we coordinate with the county, or it gets very hard to, um, we just won't be able to run our programs. But we are also up against a window of time because the tax office is kind of down in April, in May, in the first part of June while we're working with the assessor on numbers, um, things like that. But, but I'd have to be up and running with tax bills by the sec, like the second week of June. So we need to look at this and realize that there's not any wiggle room in it, nor is there, um, a choice as to do it or not. It's a mandate.
And this is the only vendor?
This is the, yeah, this is.
It's a mandate, but they don't pay for it.
Well, yeah, that, yeah, I've heard that before. Unfunded mandates, but I need to be on it as every other treasurer and assessor needs to be in the county. And, uh, I'm sorry, but that's, that's all she wrote.
Well, I can add a couple of things. BSNA is a company that provides the software for the treasurer and the assessor. And because everything in the county that they're linked to is on BSNA. Now, the one person said BSNA, or the county's already had this upgraded software for six years. And they said if you don't upgrade, we're gonna start charging you because they have to do certain things with our old software. So we got the price here, it's six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars to convert. We currently pay about thirteen hundred a year for maintenance, and that's gonna go up to fourteen twenty. So yeah, the price is in front of you. We really don't have any options. It is what it is. You're gonna, coming up under item E, um, or F, whatever it is, we have to do some other things in our hookups and stuff to accommodate it. But with the BSNA, this is that portion. So, I don't know what to tell you that you gotta do it. Uh, I've talked to a couple of neighboring townships that already have it. They like it. There's a lot of things you can do better than we currently do. And, uh, so that's where we're at, stands.
So why make a motion to approve the BSNA upgrade for .net assessing and tax, which comes to a total of sixty-three ninety, also annual, uh, maintenance of fourteen twenty for our tax and assessment?
Support.
That what you want it?
Support.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the BSNA upgrade maintenance, uh, proposal. Six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars for the upgrade and fourteen twenty for one year's maintenance. Any discussion?
Yeah, whoever owns this has a sweet deal here.
That's quite a record.
Yep.
One of the best.
Okay.
Sure it is.
Hearing, uh, nothing. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
A lot better than the healthcare rollouts.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Pat?
Okay, thank you. Onto item E. Uh, this is our yearly maintenance contract for the computers. Uh, it's from Network Computers in Lakeport. Been very satisfied. The price is the same for the last, this will be the third year in a row. Uh, the person they're representative have, that we've had for both years is, within the last couple of weeks, has left. But the new person seems, you know.
Brian's excellent.
Friendly.
Yeah.
Carl's not coming back. He's gone.
He's gone. Brian's our new guy.
Yep.
I'm the last person to know.
I thought everybody knew that.
That's because I know nothing about computers. It doesn't matter to me.
So anyway, I did price around some of our neighboring townships and they all vary, but, uh, I think it's a reasonable amount. They estimate thirty to thirty-five trips a year. And, uh, so I'd strongly recommend that we renew this for the dates indicated.
I know that we renew the contract.
I'll support that.
They've been good.
Yeah, they are.
All reports are.
Well, they also do our website. That's part of that.
And that's good now, because that was a problem.
So you want the dollar amount included in that motion, sir?
Please do.
Okay. Is that supported?
Yeah.
Two thousand dollars for the, uh,
Yep.
Could the upgrade to the computers as well?
No, that's sorry.
It's separate.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry there, um, there is two of, um, two invoice numbers.
No. You're looking at the wrong one then.
Looking at the one that says three.
Three thousand dollars is the only one we're working on right now.
Invoice one, two, three.
We'll hear about the next one in a minute.
The next one, I threw on the table and I just heard about three F's. Sorry.
Thousand dollars for net, for the network computer.
Yep. For one year contract. I screwed up. You should have had three F on the one in front of you.
You do have, but you got two, three Es.
Well, there is two, three Es.
Well, you know, if you're gonna screw up, do it. Colleen won't.
He's only approved the three thousand.
He should have had two, three Fs. I screwed up on that.
No, you got two, three Es.
I know, but this one should have been three F, the one for the eleven hundred dollars.
We'll get, we'll, we'll get through it.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
We're good.
It's not a big deal.
Alright.
We just need to check.
Alright, we're on three E. We've had a motion by Dan to approve a one-year contract with Network Computer for maintenance for service in the amount of three thousand dollars, and that was supported by.
Me, Eddie.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll roll call vote, please.
Okay, Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Me, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Item F, which I screwed up because the one with invoice three, seven, oh, one should have been three F. I'm sorry. Okay, the first thing on here is from Network Computers. Basically, this is to upgrade our computers because as of April, Microsoft is not gonna protect the XP. So we have to up. Huh?
April the eighth.
So we have to upgrade
Oh geez. Really?
To Windows seven or eight. There's been a little discussion on that. The prevailing judgment at the moment is, uh, eight. But, uh, there is an eight point one, so basically if you make a motion, I don't know if you want to give that technical, let's say eight instead of eight one. I don't know which one you're, eight pro. Just upgrade to seven.
To eight.
To eight.
It's fine.
Okay, then today, uh, we talked to, uh,
Jeff.
Jeff at Network Computers, and he sent us the invoice, which I put the wrong number on. And this is what it's gonna take to hook, uh, not only the Windows up, but the BSNA, bring everything up to snuff. And then there's also in the packet that it's gonna cost us an extra hundred bucks to upgrade our Tyler software for, what do you need? Dan?
I'm missing the invoice for the eleven hundred bucks.
It was on the table where you sat down tonight.
Right there.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
It's erroneous mark. You should be off.
Yeah, I got it.
Well, we just got that today, so I put it on the table tonight because we really need that. I don't know if it's cast in stone, but we'll, if you want to approve it, uh, we'll make sure that, you know, if it's less than that, we'll all be happy.
Right.
But, uh, the amount, it won't exceed that. But there is a hundred dollars, uh, for Tyler.
For my, to, so I can upgrade Microsoft for my fund balance.
Right, when she goes to Windows eight.
Sir, I, I'm, I'm direct.
Sure.
Alright, I've been running eight point one.
Uh-huh.
And for those that maybe
challenging?
don't want to make the big jump from what you're seeing with XP. Eight point one is a huge leap. Going from XP to seven, you're gonna see a lot of the same functions. If you go from XP to eight point one, it's a big different world. The other thing to look at is the core guts of the computer itself. Can it support eight point one? I don't know if anybody's looked at that, but I, but anyway, these are considerations because eight point one is a huge memory hog.
Well, that's why we had the sudden thing to increase the memory.
That would be for theirs. That's because .net has a big
Right.
memory.
On BSNA.
Yeah.
And, and that was discussed and, you know, seven is almost obsolete now as far as getting them in new ones.
The message traffic I've seen is expect Windows nine to show up probably within the next nine months to a year.
Well, so then, next, in two years, I'm gonna back and say, well, that's it for seven. We're not protecting it. I can spend another hundred fifty bucks on eight.
Well, XP's been done basically now for, well, probably.
Eleven years, I think.
Uh, two thousand and six was the last time they put anything in the field for XP.
Money they can make from upgrades.
But, uh, because they've had Vista and they've had seven, eight, and then eight point one. Eight point one update, which is supposed to fix some of the bugs in eight point one now, that's supposed to hit the street any day now. And then nine point one, they're, they're talking about releasing somewhere around the end of the year, year from now. So, I mean, I get those newsletters from, from Microsoft.
What's your insight?
Huh?
Then they have an eight pro.
Eight pro and eight point one. What you have is that eight, Windows eight and eight point one is for very small networks, home use type applications. Eight pro is for large business applications and server operations.
And I think that's what we're gonna get.
Yeah, that's what you want.
It was one we have to.
So.
So is it eight pro or is, does eight point one also have a problem?
Well, there's an eight point one pro and there's eight point one. A general use, and then same thing with eight O, pro and eight point one.
So if you were king of the world, what's your recommendation be?
It.
Well, Brian told us to go to eight point one because you can switch from the metro, whatever. I haven't seen it yet. But he said for us, it would be better to be the eight one because he could show us how to use it without the metro.
Well, the biggest selling feature of Windows eight or eight one
Yeah.
is if you have the capability, is that you could do touchscreen applications versus doing keyboard inputs and mouse inputs.
Oh.
That's the biggest difference between seven and eight. But if you're, I, it, it all boils down to what are you comfortable with and what is your skill level working with computers? Because the leap to go from XP to seven is not, from the standpoint, you're gonna recognize a lot of same screens. A lot of the functions are gonna be similar and everything like that. Eight is a entirely different world to you because you've got so many things you have to do to get into eight to make it function until it takes you a while to get used to it. And, I mean, I've got, you know, hundreds of hours of computer training and so forth because that's one of the things I did down there to base, you know, one of my additional requirements. So, there's things there that, you know, it's all based on internally which capabilities. But I will say it is a memory hog. You need to have eight meg of RAM at a minimum to make things work smoothly. Because a lot of computers out there, especially running XP, are still running two meg of RAM.
Yeah, we got two gigs, uh, four gigs.
Or, I'm sorry, mag, I said gig. I'm, I meant gig.
Alright.
You need eight.
And I'm going, hey, we got that handled.
No, no, eight gig. You need eight gig of RAM. But some computers can't be upgraded, that's all. I meant, I meant to say eight gig. You need eight gig of RAM to make things to work smooth for eight. And, uh, for Windows seven, usually four gig is adequate. So that's the big jump.
Do you have a major upgrade in mind coming with this?
Right.
Well, I guess if you want to make things simple, if you're gonna make a motion in the area of the network.
That's why he's got all of this.
Just put, you know.
My two cents, I'm sorry.
The amount, which they have.
You're gonna combine the two.
For, for Windows upgrade. They'll put the number of seven or eight on it. Because if you put eight on it and something happens within the next week and somebody changes their mind, then what? It's a dumb, you gotta come back.
To me, one of the main considerations is that you have a company that you've worked with for a long time. They have an obligation. They're gonna support you, and they have all along, so go with them. I mean, that, your support is, is a lot of the issue.
So it's basically a three-tiered motion. We have Windows upgrade not to exceed four hundred and forty-nine ninety-seven.
And a hardware upgrade not to exceed one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars.
And a hundred dollars for the.
Well, you guys are gonna have to repeat this.
Yeah, it's okay.
So you've got the Windows upgrade not to exceed four hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine, ninety-seven percent.
Hard drive?
Okay.
Would be eleven forty-nine.
Not to exceed?
Eleven forty-nine.
Hard drive upgrade, we'll call it.
And from Tyler, which is one bound. And from Tyler, which is one of my own. A hundred dollars for upgrade on complete.
Is, is there, can you, uh, need to put in some wiggle room in the, well, the upgrade for the hardware or not?
This came today.
Okay, 'cause you might find something.
No, he's, he went through all of our computers.
Can't know.
If he puts it in writing, that means he should do it.
He's, okay.
If something, he finds something else wrong, well, that'd be a separate issue on the basis.
Okay, that's, I just wanna make sure it happens smoothly.
So is anybody making that motion?
I will make that motion.
I made that motion, but you're welcome to...
You can, well, you make it, I'll support it.
No confusion, Brenda.
Well, I'm waiting for it to get to writing, and if it's good, we'll vote.
All right, I'll support it.
Yeah, but Brenda's busting her chops.
Okay, we got, we got Dan and Pat.
Right. And we already got the motion, and it says that our upgrade for our Windows will not exceed four forty-nine ninety-seven. Hardware will not exceed eleven forty-nine, and a hundred dollars for Tyler, which is my fund balance for perfect.
Is that hardware or hard drives? I had hard drives written down.
That's hard drives, hardware.
Hardware.
Yeah. You're good, and I supported it. And let me guess.
It can be a...
It's a roll call vote.
Very good, Brenda.
Yep.
Okay. Moved and supported. I'm not saying it again. Any discussion? Now, a roll call vote, please.
Okay, that will be Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right.
Moving on, three G. This is the Metro Act Right-of-Way Permit Extension. Uh, it's been in for about ten years. The last extension was only for three years. This time they want five years. Uh, we get about roughly almost two thousand dollars a year out of this. I don't think there's much wiggle room. If you don't like it, that they're ever gonna give you more money.
See, we get about three hundred dollars?
I think we get almost two thousand dollars.
Two thousand, okay.
And, uh, what you're gonna get, what you're gonna get. I'm sure they do it for every community.
Right.
And, uh, I did try and get ahold of our lawyer just to run it by him, but I was unable to get ahold of him. But I'm sure that it's as good as it's gonna get.
I'll make a motion to approve the Metro Act Right-of-Way Permit Extension.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the Metro Act Right-of-Way Permit Extension. Any discussion? Oh, I don't know. Where roll call vote? Run, run here. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, we shall go with Colleen.
Yes.
Dan, what's your name? Bill?
I.
Okay, Pat? Yes. Joe? Andy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Payment of the bills.
Are there any questions on the bill?
There's no questions. I make a motion that we pay the bills as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported. Paid bills, have submitted. Any discussion? Any questions from the audience? Our roll call vote, please.
What a surprise. Dan?
Yes.
Chipper?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
We get roll call vote, vote certainly.
I am, please. What's he guess at?
Moving on. Citizens' comments. Anybody out there got anything to say, exciting? No hazmat, no planning commission? We got three planning commission members here. Nothing? I know you didn't meet last month.
Actually, there's more.
Just, uh, the emergency services breakfast, uh, so I think, uh, like the first Friday in May.
Yeah.
Uh, just got information on that, so you'd be getting an invite probably. So...
Um, Bill, our freedom of our, from our fourth tier, um...
We haven't gotten a framed yet.
Okay.
We're working on it.
We got the other ones up, though, over there now.
A little bit of...
So, calling ahead.
All right.
Uh, I guess I'd just like to mention that, you know, if you need a dog license, you're too late to get it in Casco. You can call the county animal control and do it by mail, but it's gonna be more costly unless it's a new dog.
Four dollars.
Yep, was twelve, was it twelve dollars we got?
Twelve dollars and twenty-four dollars for an unneutered dog, but it is forty now.
Unless you just get the dog, then it isn't forty, 'cause it's a new dog.
Cats far behind.
I am not licensing cats.
But they only let us sell them until March first, and then they take them all away from us, so...
I see the county euthanizes cats at five times the rates as they do dogs, so it's like...
Well...
Say, like, our county's not cat friendly.
So don't come to see us. You can come to see us, but not for dog licenses.
Oh, I'm just kidding.
And one community comment, um, on the twenty-third of March, at Perch Point Conservation Club, Saint James United Church of Christ in Casco, is holding, uh, their annual Saint Pat's Day Dinner. Uh, tickets are ten dollars. There will be entertainment this year, and, uh, probably the best corned beef dinner in the county. So, uh, Saint James cordially invites all the rela, all the people in the, uh, neighborhood, bring your relatives. Tickets at the door.
What time does it start?
It starts at four P.M., and get there early because last year they ran out of potatoes.
Is Wade gonna say?
Uh, no, but, no, but we are having, we are having, uh, um, what do you call? Not all the Irish Rovers, no. And the chieftains aren't coming either, and neither is Bono and you two, but we are having, uh, uh, what do you call, a barbershop quartet.
Oh, cool.
Yes, that knows Irish songs. So it will be fun for everyone, and all the Irish in the Casco Township, which number about three, are, um, inviting all the Germans, so do come.
What day is this, Charlie?
It is Sunday, March the twenty-third.
Okay. I probably Irish it. I got a hand fifty-seven.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Nope.
If nothing else, we're up to a German. Moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stay in the...